We're gonna call our meeting to order this morning. And, uh... I'd like to welcome and thank all of our team members, actually, for being here this morning. And then we noticed a little off kilter, the, uh... date that we're meeting and the day that we're meeting and the space that I'm occupying this morning. Calling the game from the end zone, so please bear with me. Do we have a few things to get through this morning? And, uh, we should move pretty smooth smoothly in so doing. But let me again welcome everybody here. I pray that you all have had a outstanding time of whatever since we last met and, uh... and that we would continue to be the very productive, unified board that you all have demonstrated. I will, uh... ask us to, uh... I guess we would go ahead and start with our agenda this morning and, uh, ask for approval minutes from, uh, our January meeting. And, uh, I'm gonna ask our, uh... illustrious legal eagle to see what, uh... call the role on the, uh, approval of minutes or if I could get a motion to begin with on approving the minutes from our January meeting.
Second, uh...
I appreciate all inquiries, me personally, like that because I believe that we all have constituencies and, uh... and when we're asked about something, it's important that we at least speak about it intelligently and know as much as we can. So your question, uh, was right on for me.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item, uh, that we have this morning is, uh... Do we have any public comments from the, uh, public this morning?
Mr. Commissioner, at this time, we have no in-person comments more than we have any questions online or any more than the chat.
All right. How about, uh... None in here either?
I will go check the... We have no in-person...
Thank you very much. And, uh, with that, I would move to, uh... yield the floor to our executive director. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, thank you for joining us today. Uh, we appreciate that. Uh, I have continued to be busy, as everybody has noticed for sure. Uh, so I did wanna, uh, brief you on a few things that have been transparent. Uh, I've continued to meet with members of the city council and so most recently I'm with council member Johnson as well as, um, council member, um... Paige Royter. Yes, Paige Royter. Uh, yep. Uh, and so, uh... and so I think those have been really, really good conversations. We have a follow-up conversation with council member Royter tomorrow. Uh, and so, um, council member Johnson tomorrow. And so we have been working to really kind of make sure that we have strong relationships, strengthen our relationships with members of the city council as well as members of the administration. And so we're gonna continue to do that. A lot of things that we've been asked about in terms of what are our plans for, uh, you know, development, what are our plans to work with our residents. And so we have to, uh, lay that out. Uh, as you, many of you already know through our discussions. And so that's what we'll continue to do. You're gonna hear from Steve today in terms of how we announce a little about our activities around our developers forum. And I think that that's a huge, huge opportunity. Uh, I do wanna say kudos really to the city for stepping up to be part of this collaboration. I think it's not just good for NRHA, it's good for the city and the whole, uh, the types of investments we have here, which is great. Uh, we're continuing to move forward on our technological push. Uh, I do, I do wanna say, uh, there are a lot of questions and a lot of things that people have kind of thrown at me in the first, uh... while we've set up in here. But, um, I think one of the things that we are capable, I think, of doing a lot of things very much strategically. Uh, the one fundamental question that we have to continue to ask ourselves is, uh, are we as an organization able to deliver on that? And so we will continue through our discussions in terms of budget formulation, strategic discussions through our committees. So I'm really kind of starting to narrow that down and define what that conversation looks like because it is very much important. Uh, I wanna make sure that our FY25 budget is reflective, not only just our priorities, but is really reflective of an organization that is able to sustain a work period of time of the things that we wanna do. The other piece of that too is, I know we talked about strategic, uh, our strategic goals and our strategic framework. And so we will continue to go back and work through that. Uh, the other aspect too that I have, uh... we just talked about this in our meeting yesterday, but it is, uh, very clear that we need to really formulate a strategic, uh, really kind of a strategic goal and a strategic plan within the activities that we do. Um, you come in contact with a lot of different people. Um, we too have, uh, our own goals that should, one, uh, should be achieved through, uh, the, uh, the agency. And so I wanna make sure that we're not just going one off, uh, that we're able to leverage the partnerships that we have. Uh, there are a lot of different people in the community that come to us about a lot of different things. You know, so, uh... but I wanna make sure that we are kind of leveraging those relationships, but also that we have a strategic plan in terms of how we deal with real estate. How do we deal with economic inclusion? How do we deal with the variety of aspects in terms of platforms and frameworks to be able to do that? Then we know how we engage our relationships. So that's very much important. Um, otherwise, uh, we have continued to speed the pavement in a lot of different ways in terms of technology, uh, in terms of the various discussions that we have because I am very much interested in making sure that we're clicking all cylinders and all programs. So slated to go to Tampa, uh, before the end of the month. I think that's good. Uh, we're gonna have a couple of different conversations with a few other housing authorities. So, uh, Julie is in his, Julie's number in his team. We're gonna be, uh, connecting with the Atlanta Housing Authority to talk to Sarah Hilton, Sarah Hilton, uh, who is the, uh, senior vice president for, uh, government relations and resident services. She's a phenomenal talent owner and work for her. Uh, she works for the, uh, local Atlanta Housing Authority. And I wanna make sure that other folks within the organization are connecting with other, uh, of our counterparts because that is very much important to kind of leverage, uh, different things. And so we talked about that in terms of, uh, programs for, uh... landlords in the master program as well as incentives and things of that nature. And so just working through that. So now we wanna get a lot of things done. And we're gonna get them done. So that part's not a problem. Uh, but I do wanna level that in terms of we, we, we have to focus on, we gotta focus on ships and not the, uh, the destination board. Destination's important. Um, the, the ship is definitely important because I want it to sail for a pretty long time, uh, not for short course. Uh, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much for that. When, um... when do you... when do you see, are you proposing that we get together, again, refresh the strategic plan sometime in the near term here?
Yeah.
Are we gonna have a retreat and...
Yeah, I think we, I mean, we should. And I think we will have, uh... I mean, there are a couple of, a couple of different things I think we need to kind of lay out. But I think for sure we need to have a retreat. Um, I, I'm trying to think of the best way to do it. Either start staff-wise in terms of retreat and then meet with the board or our vice versa. But we're gonna, we're gonna figure that out, um, in the future over sometime in spring, um, to, to kind of have that process. Uh, clearly because, I mean, I wasn't here, you were here, so a few other people weren't here when it was done back in February last year. I think the goals just on their face, um, look very good. They're very healthy, but we have to drill down. So, yeah, I would, I would say somewhere between spring and summer.
Would you, uh, be receptive to having a, uh, board member, uh, uh... work within the planning?
Yeah.
Because, uh, I've, you know, I had in mind somebody that I spoke to this morning, uh, that I was gonna ask them about participating with that.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, we need a facilitator. Um, for sure, we need a facilitator for sure. And I think, um, the other thing that we have to look for is someone who's gonna help us in terms of putting all these pieces together because it's not just having a discussion and, and coming with the goals, but it's actually coming, putting a framework together that we can always refer to. Uh, and it would be reflective, uh, it should drill down. Once we get to the high level, it really should drill down to, um, you know, what our performance is as an agency and on a individual basis.
Good. Well, maybe before, uh, we leave today, maybe you and I and Del Pink can put our heads together to figure out whether we need two people or one. We establish our committees with two people and so...
Absolutely.
Thank you for that, uh... Mr. Executive Director. I do appreciate the fast way that you've, uh... hit the ground running is, uh, probably an understatement, uh, given the work that you've done already. Good work.
Well, good to the board, I mean, really. Because I said, you know, I started three weeks before the, before the time you guys are over that. So, uh, I think that, that helps, uh, a lot.
So, uh, would you accommodate the, uh, departmental update for us?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott.
Okay.
Uh, then, uh, I'll then turn it over, uh, to, uh, Steve and then, uh, start on the panel.
All right.
Good morning, Jen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Rose.
Good morning.
Oh, Rose is here.
Yes, good morning, Mr. ...
Uh, there's been a memo provided for an administrative financial update. I believe it starts on page thirty-nine impacted. Uh, I have not been ordered to see it. Uh, we, we met, uh, the, the committee and, uh... and staff met, uh, Monday to go over this resolution and also to go over the memo in a, in a bit more detail to look at the financials for the month of December. We are, as Nathan said, really digging in on an operating budget this time to, to look at sustainability efforts, to look at, as he said, the vision where the agency needs to be, not where it is. Um, and that will necessitate a lot of work on budget and a budget that is more so a dynamic operating plan than it is a book that we, that we put on the shelf. Uh, we, we want, we want the document and the contents of the document to really be a planning tool for staff as we go forward. We have, uh, as a bit of a procurement and administrative update, we have gotten consulting engagements with about six, I believe, six, Nathan? Six, uh, nationally recognized firms that work in this area. One of those, uh, company called Citi Advisors has taken our administrative budget, which is the biggest challenge that we always face, as you'll remember from, from years gone by. And they are working with me to do two things. To look at this as industry best practices and see where our levels are, not just staffing levels or our spending levels, to see where those things are. Um, and then also they are working to give us a model, if you will, for a pro forma that takes the agency out here into the future. We wanted to do that ourselves, but why not have somebody who did the budgeting for the New York City Housing Authority helping with? Somebody that's seen an agency of that, of that size and scope and has that, that expertise and knowledge base from the outside to help us with our forecasting. So that's very exciting. That, that just came up within the past two weeks that, uh, that they decided and, and we decided to allow them to help with that. So the budget process is moving forward. We are going to meet with the committee on the first leg of a draft in March, the second leg in April. There will be a presentation in April to the full board, public hearing in May. And then we will bring resolution for passage of the, of the twenty-five budget at the June meeting rather than call a special meeting. Ms. Rose, you remember we always call a special meeting to pass the budget. So we, we will do that in the normal meeting. Um, and we're very excited about the progress we made. Um, I would, uh, turn over the committee if they had any comment from the meeting. I know there's a committee place later on. Since we're talking about this specifically, I would invite, uh, really Dr. Smith, make any comment.
I have none to add, Scott. Thank you. Um, the memo kind of covers everything. I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll, I'll echo what Rose just said. It seems that there's a streamlining of process going on. Maybe you could also just comment, I hope I'm not putting you on, on the spot here, but on how your staff structure is changing and how your responsibilities are expanding in, in the wake of the, your, your new role.
Terrific, yeah. Uh, I'll start with the staff, the easier one. We are a big agency and, and part of our challenge is that this agency through its units and through public housing and redevelopment has to be small. And there is, you know, there is the really poor management way of handling that, which is waiting until the train comes out of the tunnel and then start sending people home. Or there is the planning process that we're looking at to where we're trying to see what this agency's gonna be in, in twenty thirty-one and to be able to get to that. Um, and, and so we, we never anticipate the train coming out of the tunnel and how it's gonna ever happen because as what we consider to be good management, we are looking at that going ahead. So the staffing, if you will, the, the account department and the development finance department are merging and, and have merged so that those functions are not duplicated so that we're talking about just one functionality. Uh, as we look at a new computer system, because, you know, that, that team is, is represented in the back. Um, we've got a demo on operating software that is really gonna allow us to change day-to-day processes, which is gonna be a, a huge help to us. That's about, what'd you say, about an eighteen-month conversion process there. Uh, so we're, we're looking at getting started with that. My role has, the challenger has frankly been to get myself out of day-to-day and be more of, uh, Mr. Sims' wingman, as he likes to say. You know, for, for the administrative side of the agency so that we can have those discussions. Um, I'm very excited about going south to see what somebody else is doing. I mean, I, I really, you know, what they've transformed with their units is, is amazing and I'm very excited to see that. Uh, and then to bring that back and be able to work on that here. But that's, the biggest change frankly is trying to get myself out of day-to-day. And right now I'm failing, sir, because I'm here eleven hours a day. So I'm, I'm working with that with, with my controller, who, uh, Kim, you met Kim Green, our controller. She'll be attending those meetings. She's getting up to speed on running the day-to-day. Um, we are in our audit process and I'm trying to transition myself out of that as well. You know, from doing everything to just managing it. And, and that's, uh, that's a challenge as well. But we're gonna get there because we've got good people upstairs. And I say upstairs because that's our financing purview and everybody's located. But I've got good folks up there. We've got good folks up there and, uh, and we'll get there.
Well, I, and we applaud the, the efforts that you're making in restructuring things, building your team and reallocation of responsibilities and reconfiguring of, of day-to-day tasks and streamlining the effectiveness of the organization. I, I guess it will be interesting to see what you discover through collaborative learning process when you're going to detailed-type places and, you know, what, what best practices you discovered. And perhaps at some point after that's done, you can give us a synopsis of what, what's been discovered.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think, I mean, if I may suggest, that's a great retreat tool. Um, the way HUD has set up their administration through what they call a central office cost center.
What is that? What they call what?
Central office cost center.
Okay.
That, that's a HUD term. And it really just means administrative costs that you can't directly charge to your operations. Um, and I've personally seen how forceful it is and how NRHA used to do it and how NRHA does it. But we're working with somebody who's seen how fifty people do it. And so that, that outside knowledge base is, is invaluable as, as we try to make our changes process-wise and structural-wise.
Are you, um, fully staffed in your department with the personnel that you need to get your overall...
Yes.
...a job accomplished?
Yes.
Talk to me a little bit about how that function, that functionality.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, you said you're working eleven hours a day.
Yeah, and it's just...
And you're trying to get...
Yeah, that's the transition. But what if you, just to transition to duties, if you will, to make sure that somebody's up to speed on training. And I still have some things that are on my desk that I need to get off my desk, which would be audit, the budget, that sort of thing, et cetera. Um, and I don't, you know, the hours are the hours, right? And, but it's, it, I can't, um... As a manager, I can't say, "Well, I'm doing this, but he gave me this job, so I can't just dump it," right? So you, you, you gotta, you gotta transition to work.
But you said Ms. Kim Green is stepping up.
Kim Green.
So you're just trying to hear a little bit more about the functionality of that?
Yeah.
You understand my question now?
Yeah. If, if you will recall, we, we had a instructor back in the day, and I'll use, I won't use names, but you have a chief financial officer and then a director of finance and then a manager under that.
Okay.
That's the, that's the structure we're trying to set up now. But because I was the director of finance, when I became CFO, I kinda kept the director of finance duties.
Okay.
And now that CFO has become deputy executive director, now that controller's gotta step up and have the duties that Lloyd Lor had back in the day. And that's, that's the things that I'm trying to bring, take down to Kim. And then she's got the same challenge because she had a full desk before as well. So she needs to pass work down. It, it's just, as you know, Mr. Wilson, you, you, you were here and you saw the folks that were upstairs. It's a new group over the last four obvious. So there's still training, there's still, there's still functionality on the duties. And we were fifteen people and we are nine now. But nine is the right number for an agency of this size.
Nine is the right number?
Nine, I, I believe so in, in accounting and finance. Uh, one of the things that we are challenged with and what we're working on with this COCC is to live within our means. Right? And, and, and we know that that's been a challenge. And so that's a, that's a challenge in all this too, is to streamline processes so that we can get it done, you know, with a, with a smaller, with a smaller team. Does that answer us?
It, it does. And I, and I, and later on, I'm sure I'd like to see how that works.
Okay.
From not, from fifteen to nine. Because I do remember how the structure was. And that's why I was asking, how does that look functional-wise?
Right.
With, and do you have the people to feel?
Oh, yeah. We, we, we managed to find a way to have accounts that will not be done by three people, it'll be done by two.
Okay.
Um, so that when one moves on, we didn't need to replace. Um, we are working our ten in accounting now with two people. Used to be two people, but one of those two people is gonna help do actual accounting work. You know, et cetera. So we, it, it's a, it's a refining of processes and how we do the work. And accounting's my thing. So this was the easiest thing for me to come in and say, "Based on my history, you know, we don't need to do this this way. We can do it this way." So that's been the easiest one for me is accounting and budget to, to streamline that back.
God, this might be somewhat freedom to it, but I know that Jeff Perry is in the process of auditing, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Anything you can tell us that, uh, that's going to come along?
Bumpy because of the transition of, of the duties, uh, as we said in, in the, in the meeting. Not bumpy from that we have any problems, but it's just a new person learning the role of, of dealing with the auditor on a day-to-day basis. The audit's going well, the numbers are fine, the, the financials are fine. Um, it's just, it, it's a process of getting through the audit. There was an impact with the computer. There was.
Like as well, right?
There was. Uh, yeah, I, I can explain that a bit if you want. Uh, because we...
I mean, it's just fair to say it provided a ten-week time.
Yeah, it's at that. And when we sent our, when we sent our financial statements in unaudited fashion to HUD, that was during the week that the IT folks had to quarantine all of our work. So we had to start over again. So not only did we lose the time, but then we had to, we had to redo it. So this, this year's been more of a challenge. You, you can't extend the deadline unfortunately, so. We'll, we'll have it done by the end of March.
You're, you're still on track. Just fight that away.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Um, how long do you think it's gonna take to transition to go forward? Uh, with the training and everything, how long do you think it's gonna take?
It's, it's actually ongoing as people come and go. Um, I think, I think good training for staff never ends. Uh, one of the things that we're doing in putting the computer system is we're gonna be retraining on, on the computer operating software. So as, as new people come, you know, there's, there's always, there's always new training. I, I don't think you're ever done, frankly. I mean, I think you, you, you train people to do their jobs, but you always wanna train them to advance and to, and to do better within their roles. So it, it, it's something that Mr. Simpson has challenged us with. This is all is to develop, to develop people constantly. Now, we, on a, on a global standpoint, the, the strategic goal is to be sustainable with this whole twin set. So that's, that's the end timeline for the sustainability goal within the strategic plan. So that's another, that's another three years. And we've got the challenge, you know, we, we got, we have other challenges besides staffing, but we definitely want to, we want to develop our people the best we can.
I'll take the liberty of perhaps rephrasing Rose's question.
Okay.
Are you working eleven hours a, a day to get to the point where you're working eight hours a day more effectively?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Hundred percent. All right.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was thinking there. You gotta work like that forever.
No. No, but when it, when it, now it has to be done, it has to be done, right? So, you know, I, I don't mind doing. I just say that, you know, that the, the original question was the roles. And right now it's kind of two jobs. I'm trying to get back to those now.
I'm gonna have to remember that. Any more questions for, uh, Scott? Before we bring up, uh, makes, uh, presenter? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Morales.
Um, first thing, uh, Nathan discussed the, the developers forum come up, coming up. Actually, I wanted to want that back. Uh, we haven't had our developers, uh, our development subcommittee yet. That's on Monday. We have a big agenda.
When is it?
We have a, a development subcommittee, board subcommittee meeting on Monday. We have a big agenda. So a lot of the items, um, we, that I'll be talking about were, will actually be going in further, much further detail on Monday.
And, uh, Ms. Conyers?
Ms. Conyers, Mr. Freylin.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so the first thing is the developers forum. We have been, uh, working with the city in coordination on planning and getting the logistics for developers forum. We've, uh, we landed on March twenty-eighth. It will be at the CROX Center in the morning of, uh, March twenty-eighth. Um, and really the goal of the, of the forum is to generate or to show the opportunities that are in the city of Norfolk of, from, um, NRHA with our properties, um, both vacant and as well as our, our, some of our other, uh, public housing properties or, or other communities. Um, and, um, also the city in, uh, putting forth some of their opportunities. And so working together, we're looking to generate interest amongst the development community, not just local, but sort of a broader range outside of the area. And again, get that interest in Norfolk in order to get, you know, better projects, better deals, um, get a, a pool of in, very interested and committed and, um, highly competent qualified developers that come here, um, to Norfolk in order to get some of these projects done. Um, there's not something that happens, you know, right away, but, um, we will be working over time on, on all of these opportunities and putting out a, a request for qualifications to get the developer pool after we have the developer forum and then continuously working through that process and then continuously working through that process and bringing them in on projects as we, as we move them forward. So again, that's March twenty eighth, CROC Center, morning, you know, the morning of, of March twenty eighth.
The agenda is set.
All right. We are, we are near set, um, but we are still working with the city through that, that agenda process. And there are different elements that we're still working through, but we're pretty close to being set.
That'll be presented next Monday, too, everyone.
We'll be talking about the draft agenda on Monday. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to open up here today is, is, you know, from the packet, and really just more about questions. A, a lot of the report that we put out for this month is just a continuation from last month. So just updated numbers, but I will highlight, um, in the packet, we did add another item, um, and that are all the private properties, where we identified several hundred units, our vacant, our, our occupancy and vacancy, sort of major, major issues there. Um, that along with the public housing communities or the RAC converted properties, we do have private properties, and those two fall into a process where, uh, evaluation in need. Um, Merrick Landing, which is, uh, one of our key properties, that was renovated, um, not too long ago. But the other three properties, Park Terrace, um, Mission College, and, uh, Oakmont North, those have not been renovated in some times. And we, we are experiencing some issues with, with each one of those, and we are moving forward with evaluation on each one of those to determine how we move forward with dealing with those issues. So we do have that, um, page, um, in, with the development report now where we'll start reporting on those properties as well. Are there any oth- other questions from the reports or items, um, that the group has particularly sent that?
Uh, can you tell me why there are so many vacancies? Is it just because they're not renovated, they're not occupied? Because when I passed last, um, boards and everything up there, I just wanna know, why are there so many, so many people leaving?
The vacancies in the public housing communities?
Yeah.
Um, it's a, a more of a matter, and, and I'm probably not the best person to, to speak on those direct items, but we do have a number of buildings that are undergo, undergoing some renovation or modi- modification. But then we're also in the process of, of getting the turns on the units, the turn times where someone's moved down, someone's moving in. So the whole process of the occupancy group moving through, getting people qualified, the, uh, maintenance, and the board's heard about this in the past, of, of, um, really, uh, uh, pushing forward that more on, on getting the turn times down, that, that whole process works together of getting folks into the community. So yes, we have a little, we have quite a bit of backlog, particularly in Young Terrace. Um, and I don't know, it, it might, we'll, we'll be up to talk about that as we, as we get through those, those, uh, turns and get folks back in those units. Um, we do the same with the private properties, that we are working with the private property managers there to make sure that when vacancies come up, that we are pushing to make sure those get occupied also.
So when they become vacant, you board them up?
If they're boarded up, it might be another issue, um, that's going on there, and Mike's popping up to, to talk about it. But I know that we do have an instance right now at, at Oak Leaf, where we had three fire, uh, we had three units that, um, that caught on fire. And so in a case like that, we're gonna board up. Mike, can I?
I'll just quickly talk about, uh, the units at Young. We are, and I think last, in last month's meeting, Yvette Thompson, our chief housing officer, talked about our unit turn crew and how we were re, uh, doing maintenance there. There's a concerted effort to really get the units turned up. I mean, there were a lot, no argument, there are a lot of vacancies there, but some of that is due to just having to catch up on the unit turns. We were not as successful as when we were doing contractors, weren't that successful in getting those. But we now have a dedicated unit turn crew that's working through that. So we're getting closer to catching up on that. Some of the units are boarded up, frankly, out of safety to, so that they don't get vandalized before we get a family in them. It's not the great, it's admittedly, that's not the best solution, but in some cases, you don't wanna go in, have it renovated, and before you get a family in there, it gets hit again. So that's part of it. But there is a concerted effort to do just that, get the, um, units occupied, that's the main goal. And Leslie, who, she's, she's, um, not up here with us today, but Leslie Hannah, who is occupancy director, she's not interim anymore, occupancy director, um, is, we, we have weekly, and as our executive director will tell you, uh, vacancy management meetings to kinda walk through where we do, where we are lacking as far as getting the units occupied. But again, a concerted effort to get them renovated and occupied.
Mike, yes? Somebody told me, and I didn't mention it to Rose, so he said in the trigger, somebody told me that there were, uh, one hundred units in Young's that were, uh, vacant and boarded.
At one point.
Huh?
At one point.
Vacant, vacant, but not boarded, to be clear.
Vacant, but not boarded?
Correct. There are some units that are ba- that are boarded.
Would, would a hundred be a number that made sense for that? I mean, is that?
The thing, I think, um, not, not to, I think everything that said, Mike said, uh, is accurate and correct. The other, it make, it, it's very much accurate. And so the other part of that is, um, the other factors that go along with that community. And people who are being pulled from the waiting list do not necessarily want to live in that community. Uh, and that makes it a bit of a challenge at the end of the day. So we are working, as Mike said, there is a, uh, there is a vacancy meeting, uh, that we meet on a regular basis. And so part of that has really been, how do we, um, you know, do, I know we plan to do like open houses and staging and stuff like that to really get people interested in it, but it is a bit of, but it is a bit of a challenge, right? So we, we, we fix it, we don't want it to be vandalized, we don't want squatters, uh, and we were also trying to pull from the waiting list, and we're hearing from, from the folks that are being pulled from the waiting list, and that's, they don't necessarily, uh, want to live in that particular community. So it is a bit of a challenge.
See, I thought it might have been a function of, uh, sort of, uh, a planning issue, uh, and, uh, you know.
Sounds like a community safety.
Yeah.
Frankly, it's, it's. Yeah, there are a number of reasons which have led to that, everything. Um, and I think we'll get Leslie to talk about it maybe next time, but I think you might pull ten people and only one wants to go. I mean, that's been part of the problem, whether it's been, uh, crime, whether it's been perception, and, and, um, I don't wanna speak for Karen, but, I mean, we just had, in our, uh, public housing safety meeting yesterday, we were talking about, uh, crimes in the community, and Karen, I don't wanna speak for you, but I don't believe. Right now, it's been, and I, I, I'd say in a public meeting, in a backfire, but it's been rather calm for the last few months. But again, we know spring is coming, and we know what happens in the spring. Um, but it's, it's not any one thing that leads to the vacancies, it's a number of things. But what we can control are the unit turns. We're getting that, we're, we're, we're cranking down that number.
So, I mean, just for clarity and for full understanding for, for people who are watching this, in the future, you're saying that we're doing our part, basically, when it comes to turns, when it comes to the, the standards of living, uh, for these particular properties to be accessible for people to live in. We are ready for a person to move in, for the most part, in those a hundred units.
So I think, I don't, and again, I don't wanna speak for Leslie, but I mean, if we had someone who said, hey, I'm ready to go to Young, we'd probably find, assuming bedroom sizes and everything, we'd probably find them a unit. And Karen, I'm speaking out of.
Hey, no, you're speaking just briefly, sir. Um, I just wanted to add, uh, in addition to these safety components.
Karen.
For travel.
Oh.
Sorry, sir.
Sorry. They moved me up here and then everything went down there.
I would go with Mr. Mike Campbell, I, I, I'll go. So in addition to the safety component, um, I wanna understand, you know, and explain the culture on the street. People that they talk, so when there's a shooting or something, everybody talks. Or when the Africans come in, you know, I heard that, you know, this is bad because they had a shooting, five people were shot. We know that was three years ago. So I, I think from a advertiser's standpoint, we may wanna look at some different ways, uh, trying to market our property, you know, that thing about it. Uh, that's a lot of it.
Okay.
Uh, one of the other issues is, we know that we are working very hard on the maintenance issues. We continue to work on, on that. The daily work orders, the long-term solutions that we need to provide, uh, for not only Young Terrace, but some of the other communities. And I think the change in the maintenance structure will help us with that, but certainly they need work. Uh, we continue to get complaints through the fall of ours, uh, the clawed toilets and, you know, bordering those kinda things. So we're trying to address those, and we have to be really realistic. It's not always the crime, that's the thing that, well, people will talk about the most.
Yeah.
Uh, things have really calmed down a whole lot in Young Terrace. We've brought a lot of law enforcement resources in there, uh, some state level resources.
Right.
Uh, try to assist us, whether you see them or not, trust me, those resources are there.
Right.
But there again, I think if we can look at some way to, uh, try to market, especially Young, a little bit better, um, and tell them our story about what we're doing, uh, to make those apartments livable, safe, up to standard.
Right.
Want it up to the same standard that we do in our homes. And that's the expectation that I have in my colleagues as well.
Yeah.
I think, I think you, excuse me, I wanna interject, but I think you made a great point when, I think, the highlight of what you said is tell, have an opportunity to tell our story, right? Like, what platform are we using? Like, how are we creating an narrative around, uh, the improvements that we're making, right? Where can people see those things? I mean, people are fond of like, these are the things that are being done in areas contrary, contrary to what other people may say, right? So I think that, that's something that we should really lean into, um, just being on the proactive perspective of really telling our own story, right? Um, for example, I know, um, a lot of meetings that we've had prior months, we talked about call boxes and things of that nature. And, uh, do people know that we're integrating our systems as far as maintenance, right? Hey, by the way, I want you guys to know now that, you know, these areas that you're living in would now have a centralized maintenance system. And here's how it goes, right? Are we telling these stories, right? Are we telling the stories about the call box, you know, on a monthly basis? Hey, look, you know, since we installed these call boxes, this is what we think, right? Like, do the people know, right? We're doing the work, right? And I think with the agency, a lot of times, we're doing the work and people don't know, right? Like, people can come up here and say, oh, you have five million dollars, right? Like, we talked about that, Steve, didn't we? Oh, you guys have five million dollars of extra money? Well, we're letting them tell the story, right? Like, the reality is, not every, not every community qualifies for those, right? Like, where's the education behind what we're doing? And where are we putting that information for people to easily accept? Right? So I think that that's something that we really should lean into, because we're doing the work, we're out here working really hard. And like, how are we bragging about what we're doing? Or how are we, you know, um, telling people what's really going on? I think that's very important.
I would, uh, listen, I would like to either recommend and follow up with, uh, the possibility of a marketing campaign. So I'm right with you, uh, Ms. Rose, and the possibility of starting a type of, uh, campaign committee of sorts that maybe grassroots with the community and advertise and market in such a way, the benefits. And let's start with Young Terrace, and then go beyond Young Terrace at some point. But sometime I think our communities get a bad rap, if you will. Uh, so that would be a recommendation, that we start with Young's and begin to market and advertise Young. Sometime people will say, if you move in our community, you get a, a month free rent. I mean, there's just ways, I don't know, to advertise by which we wanna, you know, change the, the trajectory or the perspective, if you will, of what's been going on in particular Young.
Ironically, to both of your comments, our executive director, and I think it was as recently, what, Tuesday? We, we talked about that very thing as far as, uh, how to market, how to change the perception, if you will, of Young and Calvert as well. I mean, one of the things that Mr. Simmons said on more than one occasion, how close is it to downtown? Uh, and, and that's simple, but that's how they market all the downtown apartments, right?
Yeah.
We can be saying the same thing. So look for just that. Um, probably in the str- we, frankly, we wanted to catch up a little bit more on some of the vacant units and the unit turn, I should say, so that we, we kinda got more maintenance done. But what, to your point, that's coming, stay tuned, and we, we will update you on that. You'll hear it in your committees and also at the board level.
I mean, but you know, uh, but I think we can do two things at once. Spring is coming, summer will be here before we know it, and we talked about that in our committee yesterday.
Yes, sir.
We need to get, uh, a group together and start working on this while you're working on maintenance. So we need to do two things at once, because by the time summer gets here, this marketing should have already.
Sir, we'll be on.
Can I, uh, put my, uh, property management hat on for a minute? And tell you that there are times that you will let, uh, your results tell the story for you. And, uh, what I mean by that is you got some things that are happening in those communities that people don't know about. And that's gonna generate a result. So if I come up and, uh, say, why are we doing more in Young's? Then, then my manager will be able to say, well, last month we had, uh, fourteen muggins, and now, over the last six months, that's been reduced to less than three a month. That's our story. So oftentimes, your results will tell the story for you, and, uh, and if you try to respond to, uh, you know, others in the, uh, public, if you will, you'll be changing the message every month. You don't wanna be getting in the business, I guess, of managing the message, and I think that's where I'm, where I'm going. You always want to make sure you got the right image, I understand that, and the right message about the property, but you don't want that to drive all of what you do for a property, and I don't want a manager. So I certainly wouldn't, uh, and if there are times that you wanna let your results tell the story for you, then, uh, we used to have a saying, when I was at property management, a million years ago, you know, you drive down the highway, you see these signs, first month, free rent, no, uh, no, uh, deposit required.
Mm-hmm.
We used to say, translated that means this place is such a dump, I'll pay you to live here. And so, so, so sometimes. That's, that's my point. That's my point.
Okay.
Thank you, Nigel.
You know, and Paul, take, uh, certainly, I'm sure you're aware of this, but I've been, we're commenting on it, marketing these days.
Yeah.
It's social media, social media, social.
We, I, I just wanna be clear to everybody, I mean, we do have a position of director of, uh, communications and intergovernmental, uh, affairs posted today. So anybody who's watching this, uh, you know.
I don't know how current it is.
So we're on, we're, we're, we're on it, and it is about telling our story for sure, and we have a lot to overcome. And a lot of organizations, they don't, no one has mastered in terms of necessarily telling the story in our space. Uh, and so, um, you know, I think there's a lot that we can do about it, there's a lot of positives. So as Mike said, I, I stopped the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I said, let's look out of this window, let's talk about what we, what we have here. In any place in, across this country, where you have downtown locations, that, that is huge. We should not discount that by any means, right? So we know that it has a lot of positives to it, and we're trying to work through that. We know there's some negative aspects to it, and we're, we, you know, we're trying to overcome that as well. Some of it is perception, uh, as, uh, Mike talked about and Karen did as well. Statistically, crime is down, but if you don't feel it, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything to you. And so what we have to do is we have, we know statistically we're there, or we're getting, where we, we're getting to a good place. People have to feel that. Uh, and so, and that's a, that's not just an NRHA thing. Um, that's a community thing, and that's what we have to work with.
Yeah, and what I'm referring is how, what medium do we use?
Oh, yeah.
To get the message out.
Well.
I'm looking on our, I don't know how current.
Our Facebook, our Facebook page?
We have a whopping ten thousand followers on Facebook.
We do.
On what?
The National Riding Horse Association, and we're a follower.
What is, what is that you're looking on film for Facebook? We got ten thousand followers.
Yeah, well, Facebook is not necessarily the most current platform. But I think that's the mechanism by which this message has reached people, that everybody has.
Yeah, I think there is an opportunity for us to market a number of different things across a number of different programs. I think for sure, we can get there, uh, in terms of letting people know the units are available. We're letting people know in terms of, I mean, we already talked about, again, the staging, the marketing, having an open house, doing some things in terms of a campaign. So we're focused, but.
Just wanna add one more thing, actually.
Add one more thing.
We're to respect Young Terrace, we do have two projects out there, um, two buildings basically offline, where we're doing a, 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 not just a unit turn, but a renovation of units. Um, and then we also are preparing the one building where we're gonna be doing the laundry facility. So on both of those, what we can do from the marketing, I think you're great comments, is I'll get with Clayton, and we'll look to get some boards up to basically that outline what that project is in front of those buildings, so the residents know they're not just boarded up because it's a vacancy, but they're boarded up for a reason where there's a project coming. So I think that's a little part of that, and, and again, we also then get that up, the board picture on the, um, social media, so folks know that, that what's going on there, so it's a little bit.
Steve, do we have any mechanism whereby, uh, in the case of Young Terrace, for example, we're doing the laundry? Uh, is, is there a mechanism whereby we get that information out to the tenants in Young Terrace?
They have the newsletter.
Yeah, we'll do it through the newsletter, it's, uh, a community meeting, so yes. So we'll make sure that's, that's out there. Um, the only other item I'm gonna note today is with, uh, the Choice Neighborhoods program. Um, we do have, uh, another project, um, that, well, the, the first phase, so that is Reunion and, um, Origin, first two buildings that are being built by. First two buildings that are being built by, uh, um, Franchore and Franklin Johnson Group. Um, those, those, uh, both have their sort of bits of occupancy. There are move-ins into, uh, Reunion and Origin will start a little bit later this month. We will have a report to the board next month, um, on those lease-ups and where we're at with, with all of that. Um, also, there is a private, uh, development at the top of, of, of the block. And so that's at the former Willis Building, um, I was reminding you yesterday about that, that, that's, that's reference to it. The former Willis Building, which is the top edge church in Brambleton, uh, that's being done by a private group. But they, we also have, um, project-based vouchers in that building and those are tied to our, uh, Choice Neighborhoods program. Um, that building is set to open in May. And so we'll be coordinating internally with the occupancy department and, and NRHA and the developer to get the, uh, waitlist open and then start managing that process also.
Is that the one that, uh, First Baptist Beast Street, you know?
Yes. Yes.
Is that what?
Steve, can I ask you one other question about the, um, developer forum at the end of March? Are you looking for any role or participation on part of, of the commissioners at that event? Certainly looking forward to you guys being there. Um, we have not, and we, as we go through the agenda, we have not identified a, a, a speaking part, um, or commissioners at this time. Um, we do have a, or, uh, a, uh, comments from the mayor, um, that will open the session. But we are still in the process of, of that agenda. But we do, um, we do expect and, and hope that the commissioners will be there certainly to participate. An invitation will go out there for. Yes, we're, um, getting ready to send, to save the date, actually, in the next couple of days. They just finalizing the, the last bit of the image to, to send out. We've, uh, assembled all, you know, a million emails. So all, all of that will be going out in the next couple of days. Any other questions? Albert, I'm looking at you.
I'm good. Oh, thank you. I do, I, I have one last thing, sorry. Um, I know our, our two units, uh, I mean, our, our two developments that we have people moving into. Um, do we have any type of tracking or, um, understanding around? I know when I went, we did a tour, we talked about, uh, some of the training courses that some of the people that are be transitioning into these particular places because these are mixed income areas. Talked about like, there's not common areas and things of that nature. And one of the things that I brought up was imagery and perception and cohesion, you know, in these communities, right? Like, do we have a track, a tracking or metric around people that are coming back to these communities that were formerly project-based housing? Um, the trainings that were prepared for them and what type of trainings that they took before they moved into these, uh, particular, uh, units?
Just want to, um, we do have tracking, obviously, for everyone coming back. We'll bring that to the board next month. Um, on the training part, we'll also next month, um, we reschedule from this month because Suzanne couldn't be here. Um, but we do have USI, Nicole Brown from USI coming next month. Um, that is a case management group that's been working with a former Tidewater family. So I think I'll, I'll leave that for her to discuss sort of all the items that they go over with the families now.
Yeah, I, I definitely, I, I, I definitely want a high priority there, right? I think that's a super high priority. Um, as we're continuing to make these developments and that city continues to progress, right? We want these things to be, you know, we want these things to really work out, you know? Just like Broad Creek, right? We want, we want that same feel, right? We don't want any negative connotations around these particular developments that are being built. Um, so we want to make sure that people are prepared and equipped to work in and to live around different socioeconomic statuses that everyone, you know, feeling comfortable about staying in those places.
Absolutely. I would pass that on to, to Nicole so that that'll be a topic that she covers next month.
And, and maybe under that, the good neighbor policy, specifically, uh, when I've done relocation in the past, that was included in the package, uh, the importance of, uh, what a good neighbor is, what a good neighbor does, and, uh, to get involved in your civic leagues and so forth when you move to a new community. So some of that material is out there and Nicole should know quite a bit about it. I look forward to seeing her, I look forward to.
You do, uh. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Nathan, any, any other update from, uh?
Uh, Pam was coming up to give, uh, the HCB.
Operation there?
Uh, for HCB.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I'm here to give you an update on the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And we continue to assist, uh, low and moderate income persons in the city of Norfolk have affordable as well as sanitary housing. Of the reports, we have the report. We are also promoting our voucher holders that have income of twenty-five thousand dollars or more for a year. And they have been encouraged to utilize their voucher as a homeownership piece. Where in the Housing Authority, instead of paying a landlord, will actually send the money to the family so that they can pay a mortgage payment. Uh, we're working diligently to answer your question as far as training. Last month, we actually had all of the Housing Choice Voucher Specialists and also the TVB Community Managers and the Admins to go through a training for three days with NAMCA with rent calculation. And also to include, um, Housing Choice Voucher Rent Calculations, Low Income Public Housing Calculations, and an update with HOPMA. And that was successful. A lot of the persons that took the training also passed a certification exam to become a certified rent calculation specialist. We're also marketing the landlords to ensure that our families will be able to lease properties in low-poperty area which would have a low concentration of, um, poor people in the area so that they will be able to have high opportunities. So we are doing that. We have a rolling TVB RFP out, which will also insist with that. It's for, um, individuals that are within Tidewater Gardens that used to live there. They will have a first preference, but then, once these developments create those communities, individuals with vouchers also have the opportunity to utilize those vouchers in those communities. And as Scott stated, yes, we work to ensure that we give our clients the best customer service. We work eleven to twelve hours a day to be available to do their enter rooms, to process their certification. Rent increases, our landlords are trying to catch up on COVID. So we're working hard just to manage our program on a daily basis. Any questions?
Any questions for, uh, Pamela? Pamela, I got one, uh, question, uh, and it's just informational kind of thing. But, uh, we hear this, uh, term now a lot. We get it from city council, I do, and, uh, and, uh, we start talking about affordable housing. We, we have this term called, uh, uh, workforce housing or, or, uh, you know, what is, uh, the affordable housing as it relates to, uh, workforce? What would they, they, do you get some kind of printout from HUD that tells you what, uh, affordable housing looks like in certain areas?
We do not get a printout, but to ensure that the housing is affordable, Norfolk Housing Authority with our voucher payment standard, we have it set at one hundred and ten percent of the FMR. So will they see what the FMR really states that it should be in Norfolk? We also have two areas, the two-three-five-zero-seven and also two-three-five-ten, where we use the small FMR voucher payment standards in that area to ensure that the families will have greater opportunity.
Right.
To lease properties with higher rental payments.
Well, the reason I ask you that is because, uh, one of the comments that, uh, Mr. Sims made, uh, during our question interview session was how, uh, I think he meant nationally. We had to look at, uh, how the Choice Vouchers and how, uh, we have an internal, correct me if I'm misquoting this, Nathan, but we haven't kind of kept up with the value of housing and how landlords or housing owners, their cost of housing has gone up, the value of the house has gone up. But we haven't kind of kept pace as it relates to, uh, what Housing Choice Voucher or what federal government allows. Is that kind of, do you remember that?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think the biggest piece of that is really, not internally, but it really is the program in general, right?
Okay.
So the market is, everybody, as everyone knows, is very, very tight.
Yeah, the program in general, that's, yeah.
So we, we have to continue to advocate in terms of looking at our market to make sure that the rents are set at a level that people can, uh, because, because it's really about buying power, really, it's renting power. And so the more limited it becomes, the difficult it is for it to be for people to, to find housing. And so it's a, it's upon us, it's upon really HUD at the end of the day, um, to continue to look at the, the analysis of our market, um, you know, to be able to say, all right, well, here's the new, you know, here's the new FMR, here's the new calculation, here's the new FMR, um, for that area so that, um, our voucher participants, uh, can have much more buying power in the market.
Is that kind of, is, is that kind of correlation to what Ms. Pam was talking about, reference to the two-three-five-zero-seven and two-three-five-zero?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the FMR, I mean, that rea, you typically will raise the payment standard to penetrate those, those, that have the one-ten to penetrate those markets where we typically would not have a foothold.
How, how does that advocacy work on those smaller scales as opposed to all the others that approach? Like, how were you able to get that done?
How we, well, actually, we agreed to using those particular. But HUD has done a study recently and have actually added Norfolk Housing Authority to be one of the agencies to do it around the board. Um, we're still reviewing that and assessing that program to do with, in, with the entire actual city of Norfolk to use the small area FMR. But, and I just want to say, um, as Mr. Smith said, um, when HUD publishes the FMR, we immediately look at it and instead of saying, oh, we're just going to stay at one hundred percent for this year, we were actually at a hundred and twenty percent. And we actually were able to get a waiver from HUD. But HUD has stopped those waivers and those waivers came out during the COVID time wherein we were at a hundred and twenty percent. So we have the ability, HUD gives us the ability to either set our FMR voucher payment standards between ninety percent and a hundred and ten percent of the FMR. So we set it at a hundred and ten percent so that our families will have that leasing power with the higher rent. And also, after a family moves in after that initial year, landlords have that right to request a rental increase. And believe me, our landlords do request those rental increases. When I say we get in abundance, we get a possibly forty a day, which, and when I'm saying a day, I'm talking about three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. And that's yearly, most of the landlords are increasing their rent on a yearly basis, some do it more often. And as long as that increase is reasonable, we will process it. We do the rent reasonableness comparable study, which we are required to do. And then we process that rent reasonableness to make sure that that landlord is giving that rent increase within sixty days once they request it.
Thank you, Pamela.
You are welcome.
Any other questions for?
Miss Pam, this is your schematic, this, uh, this layout in, in the, this is yours, yes?
Yes.
I was reading, when I was reading through it, um, under the waitlist summary.
Yes.
I don't know if I'm getting colorblind or what.
Okay.
But could you kind of adjust that a little bit so that those colors, so they're things to blend together?
Okay.
I can't quite read.
All right, that's actually, and she just said she will do it.
Who, who, yeah. Oh, okay. Uh, because a lot, the colors look similar in the same.
Okay, did you have a, a question on a specific number given? I could give that to you.
Uh, well, okay. So the disabled is, uh, which one? Is that the five-twenty-four?
Five, oh, for, you're talking about for?
The, uh, waitlist summary.
The waitlist summary?
The pie, the pie chart. That pie chart. I mean, the colors are just so blended, I can't.
The colors are blended, uh, for.
I'm gonna, they have disabled elderly.
Exactly what you say, but I could give you the numbers on the actual waiting.
That's what he's looking at. You see what I'm saying? That right there.
Okay, okay. Oh, the percentage. I could give you the actual number of people on the, the waiting list.
Uh, she's showing me.
Okay.
She's just in having it in front of her, that's why I'm showing her mine. You good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, that's all, uh, all we have today.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
All right, Mr. Sims, who we have next?
Uh, we're done from our side, um, so, uh, is there any updates from, uh, the committees?
Any other department?
No, departments are done, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, with that. We get, uh, any committee, uh, reports? Any, uh, board committee reports?
I think I'll just jump in because I'm so excited about what we are doing.
Being excited.
The, uh.
Come on, come on.
The public housing, the public housing committee met on yesterday.
You wanna, you wanna be up here, you wanna do it for me?
Oh, no, that's right here. Right here, uh, oh, we're just engaged, uh, a lot is going, by the way. Uh, good, good, good afternoon. What is it, gentlemen?
You were, you were Navy SEAL, I knew you.
We've got a lot going on, I know. Um, I appreciate Ms., uh, Yvette yesterday for opening up our, uh, public housing, uh, committee meeting on yesterday. As I said, we are quite engaged, uh, those that were in attendance was, uh, ED, of course, uh, Mr. Sims, uh, Mr. Clark, Steve Morales, uh, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Yvette Thompson, Ms. Rose, and, uh, Karen Rose, uh, and myself.
Oh, my, yeah, everybody.
Yeah, we were in there and we were just really covering a, a great, uh, deal of information. I was, um, I'd asked Ms. Rose, based on the crime and, and addressing those issues, to come back with a, uh, report, um, to go back and capture those cases that took place last year, the latter part of last year, and bring us up to date on what was happening. And, uh, she was able to report with that on yesterday. And, um, we will be getting a report to the board at some point in time. Uh, but she went back and, uh, covered that information, uh, in a schematic report. And, um, seems like a lot of shootings have been taking place on the latter part of the year. We're, uh, down, as you've heard, um, and only have about three incidents, if I'm right, Ms. Rose, that has been reported for the year. So we're trending, uh, in the right direction. Uh, Ms. Yvette talked about the call centers that was available, uh, to the community. And I think it started off in Oakley, I think it was.
Yeah.
And eventually that will be, um, moving forward to, uh, other communities, uh, going about, uh, taking care of the, uh, information where, when families report, um, issues in their, in their home, they're able to get, uh, work orders completed, like, um, after hours as well. And so that information is being tracked as to, um, how many reports, uh, work orders that they're getting. So I asked the question, well, what type of reports are you getting for the work orders? And simply she was saying, with, I think, toilets being clogged and, uh, and a few other types, simple things that they seem to be, uh, addressing. But I just wanted you to know that, uh, we are engaged, um, and I'm enjoying the direction of that the community is moving, okay?
Very good, very good.
Any questions for me regarding our meeting?
I just, I just wanted to make sure that you acknowledged, Ms., your, your, your wing person, Ms. Broom.
With, with that.
Ms. Broom, within.
Oh, my goodness, yes. Yes, oh, my goodness. I'm, I apologize, hold on, I want to let you know. I apologize because I was looking for, uh, uh, an agenda that we always have in our meeting. And she will probably strangle me if I go, thank you.
I just want to make sure we're all right.
Ms. Shirley Broom joined our meeting yesterday, yeah. And that has been my, uh, partner in crime.
Sure, come in here and get.
Yeah, she will come in here while I'm at the mic.
Right, right.
And she's been my partner in crime for, uh, twenty-plus years.
Yeah.
So was happy to, I was happy to see her in the meeting on yesterday. And she worked with Ms. Karen Rose, uh, in the field of, um, what's that new? role? Special project, special project person. And she is the right uh young lady for the job. I will say this in my um stepping away from the mic. We talked about um Ms. Thomas Thompson doing a survey in the community to kind of capture some of the things that's going on, what the families are in need of. So I do understand that that survey uh did go out to the families as well as um Mr. Julius Norman will be doing a survey also because we're trying to capture what's happening in our communities, what direction we should be moving. And then we're looking to uh capture all of that and get that information at a glance uh to the Board of Commissioners. So thank you for this space.
Yeah, that's good insight. So we uh Phil, you gonna report next?
Yeah. The uh.
Are you finance?
What's that?
You reporting on finance?
I'm gonna go on uh safety and and community engagement and finance.
All right.
So the, this was really our first meeting of the safety and and community engagement meeting. Suzanne Purrier and I met with um Nate and Karen and Julius um last Friday. And what I would say is it was a broad kind of far-ranging, general discussion that I think helped clarify for me, perhaps I'm gonna steep upward facing my learning curve here, the interplay between the safety component of 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 this, you know, of this organization and the community engagement component of this organization. And Karen provided us with a very um uh clear overview of what enforcement and technology and 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 the interplay between uh the police department and the 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 school safety uh programs play and the network of people that she works with outside of the N R H A to assure uh safe, safe communities. And Mr. Norman then provided us with a, a, a clear understanding of the pillars of um what community engagement is all about, specifically relating to employment and financial integrity with um education and the school systems. Uh the third thing was um with public health and within that framework specifically, the important aspects of uh mental health and also um food insecurity issues. And then the final thing was just a broader reference, a pillar to further community engagement, all of which are structured around building healthy communities. And how if we build healthy communities, there is a necessary follow-on of having a safe community. So I, it is our plan to continue to um meet um at the, I guess, the first Friday of every month, uh to begin to define um a dashboard, you know, what metrics are we going to be looking at, understanding more about the demographics of our, of our, the community we serve, and to identify action steps within the framework of of the existing and perhaps newly minted strategic plan for, for that we'll, we'll be undertaking. Um Earl, I'm gonna take the opportunity to just talk about what we got to the Finance Committee. So Earl and I met on Monday. It is our plan to continue to meet on a scheduled basis prior to every monthly um board meeting to uh meet with a financial representative. The, what came out of that meeting, I, I, a lot of it was, I prompted by asking Mr. Pons to explain what was going on with the changes in work structure, with process and such. There was a fair amount of discussion about that. Um we're, we're working on the, on the audit. We, the budgeting process was discussed. Most importantly, um we're in the process of drafting a policy regarding uh dispensation of properties that are within the domain of the N R H A, uh getting a comprehensive list or inventory of those properties and 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 identifying ways in which we can work uh in an interdisciplinary manner across the city with their different stakeholders to fulfill the development, redevelopment component of our mandate. So I think that summarizes, and again, that committee will be meeting on Monday. Earl, anything else you want to add to it? Does uh the board or anybody here have any questions about the activities of, of these two committees?
On either one of those committees. No questions? Thank you, Phil. Dr. Smith, you and Earl are doing a good work.
Yeah, for the um Development Committee, we tried to meet um the Monday before our meetings, but unfortunately, we kind of moved this meeting around. Um so we don't have a uh, we don't have an update, but um Mr. Prell and I will uh meet this Monday coming up and then we'll have a, we'll have an update for you all at the next calendar meeting.
So I will add, Mr. Chairman, that we all, I am looking forward to uh four way down to Tampa.
Oh, yeah.
Uh to see, you know, what's best practice we might be able to bring from them.
Y'all going down to Tampa, Florida?
And my understanding is Tampa has an exemplary uh public housing initiative progressive that's turned my reviews for them.
Anything I can learn down there?
Uh, I'm sure it is.
No.
I'm sure it is. But uh we all look forward to that. Of course, we'll give you a report on that when we get back after what we were able to come up with and what we might be.
I'm looking forward to you report after that. Good, I like that. Sean, you have uh something to present this morning?
Nothing.
Hmm?
No, sir.
Yeah, uh, well, that ends our committee uh reports. And uh any uh comments or questions from the commissioners? The uh commissioner uh comments are, it's your, your time on the agenda. Anybody? Phil?
Yeah, I, I want to applaud the executive director for the efforts he's making and reaching out to the members of the City Council and cultivating relationships at very early in his tenure. Um having, we all know that this is a community that's driven by relationships. And and I think that the efforts that you've made to reach out to the elected representatives and also the, the folks that work for the city directly are very important. We all know that there are probably going to be some changes in the complexion and makeup of the City Council in the coming election cycle. And but still, building these relationships really definitely is going to be important because they necessarily follow on oftentimes get some, when I said seats, that's what I'll. Um I, I, again, I'll restate, I really applaud your efforts.
Well said.
Thank you.
Well said, and uh I think we'll observe that.
Uh I'd like to just kind of piggyback on that, Dr. Smith. The, the executive director might pop up anywhere.
Yeah.
He's had hours uh in that um the councilman Paige had invited uh the city to come to uh a forum or for blackmails called Iron Sharpened Iron. And it was well attended.
It was. A lot of influential people were in that room.
I, I met a lot of people from many years back.
Yeah.
And as I was shaking hands with uh different ones and greeting them, I bumped right into the E D. And uh so it was very good to see him out that evening and uh it was a great forum.
Yeah, I was supposed to do a panel there and I had the wrong day. Uh I showed up Friday. Everybody was telling me, Miss Al, we used to be here yesterday.
Uh I would like to finish by uh talking about a couple of takeaways from the meeting uh for me. Um or that I'm looking for is the renderings from the resolution. Um at some point, I'm not sure it will get those to me. And uh just some more uh information about marketing strategies for uh young terrorists and communities beyond that. Those would be the two things I would be looking for in the coming days. Thank you, Chairman.
All right.
I yield back.
Yeah, I want to um also come in the Housing Authority, uh just looking over, uh just looking over the committee notes. Um and one of the things that I've noticed, um I just want to shout out the Housing Authority is just doing a good job. We're doing with price control on the private property that we own. All right, they're very affordable in Norfolk. Um you know, for all of us who are residents in Norfolk, we really understand how expensive it is to live in the city at this current point in construction. It's very, very expensive to live in the city of Norfolk. Um and I talked to people four or five years ago when I was getting into real estate on Buy Now, right, and in rent now. And uh just to see some of the fair market rates that you guys are using, you could be charging a lot more uh for those particular uh, for those particular units in Mission College and Park Area and Oakmount North. Um it's very affordable, it's very reasonable. I'm sure those places are in demand. You know, probably some maintenance opportunities. But I just want to say thank you all for continuing to fight the affordability fight uh in this area despite, you know, there could be opportunities to increase revenue because I'm sure we all need it, but you know, making that conscious decision on doing the right thing for the community. Um I really take my hat off to the Housing Authority for that. So thank you for that. Um and then the second thing I want to say is too, I got an opportunity to go to the St. Paul Advisory Committee. Um uh and it was very, very informative on uh some of the things that are coming down the pipeline, um how the Advisory Commission, uh Committee is committed to diversity and inclusion, um and finding ways to be able to get things done in the city uh through uh just different channels and avenues and debundling and creative ways that they're making it uh, you know, accessible for the smaller, uh for the smaller companies, the smaller builders, the smaller uh workers. So I just want to thank you all. And I also saw Nathan there. Like you gotta say, it was probably seven o'clock at night, you know, and we got out, you know, someone, uh we were there till about what, eight or nine, we had to get cut off a little farther along, right? And uh and we even talked afterward and Nathan was still there, you know, well into the night. So the commitment that uh you have for this uh this agency, um we see the energy and we feed off of it and it motivates us to continue to come out and to serve as well too. So thank you to your team as well too. I really appreciate the hard work here. Um I think Scott said uh before, um they gave us, they gave us a great uh board of uh team one accident, right? That I don't think we realized, you know, you know, the chemistry and the synergy of this room. So thank you all, you know, for the continued work.
Thank you, uh Doron. Uh along those lines, uh a lot of you don't know this, uh some of you do. Uh January fifteenth, the Urban League had its annual Ma Lu King Junior Breakfast. Uh it's uh the purpose of that breakfast is to uh continue in the spirit of uh the work that Ma Lu King was doing in way of unifying our country and uh bringing peace and and uh raising the expectation for people moving out of poverty and all of that. And every year, the Urban League has a breakfast that unifies that. And they honored, uh recognized Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for our work in affordable housing. And uh Nathan accepted the award on behalf of uh all of the staff members here and the work that you all do. And that's how it was uh relayed. It was well attended. They used to uh go to venues of uh two, three hundred, four hundred, that kind of thing, uh fourteen hundred people. Uh it was very well attended and uh and I was so pleased and proud of uh you all.
Yes.
Uh when Nathan accepted the award for the work that Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority is doing in the area of uh affordable housing. So thanks again to Nathan and the team. Uh and they uh talked about all of the different avenues that uh we had uh done there. And I knew it because uh they were sharing with me before a meeting uh why they were giving the award to our redevelopment housing authority. And so I was glad to be there. And uh I couldn't get close to the stage, but I was glad to be there. Uh Dr. Freely?
Hi, you?
Dr. Smith?
How can I help?
Ms. Rose Harrington? Uh I will entertain a motion.
I will move, move.
Uh?
I move that way. Second.
Probably move to the second, Ms. Conner Scarlett Rose.
Sure. Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Mr. Prely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Chairman Albert?
Aye, we adjourn.
Thank you.